Right, good evening members. Good evening our members of the public this evening. And also, good evening to any of our residents who are watching this on the live stream. And welcome to the meeting of Ramsgate Town Council Full Council this evening. So, if I can, I will start on the membership of councillors. Have we got any apologies please?
Chair, we have apologies from councillor Young, she's unwell.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Havington's just arrived.
That's great, good timing councillor Havington. All right, are there any declarations of interest? Any declarations of interest on this evening's items? No, I'll take that as an... Oh, sorry!
I'm the director with Ayr, so I will make myself.
Thank you councillor Havington, thank you. Right, item three, public participation. We have one public request to speak, and that is by Mr Furnish, who's sitting at the back there. And it's in relation to Ramsgate Football Club, I believe. Mr Furnish, you have three minutes. Although if you do go over, I will allow you to go over. As soon as you're the only speaker here, see me then, mate. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor chairman. I hope everyone can hear me.
Come over here, yeah, come up this centre, yeah.
Chair, I haven't read the point of order for ages.
You haven't, no you haven't.
On a constitutional matter, I note that having come in this evening, we still don't have a picture of King George, King Charles III on the mantelpiece. It may be that there's been a palace protocol, until the official one has been done, we are to leave the late majesty up there. But it's not a palace protocol. Is it possible we could at least have them both?
Well, I would certainly ask the town clerk to look into that, and to see what protocol there is for it. And yeah, we'd be happy, I'm always happy to have... Well, I always love the old queen anyway, but whoever I like being is another matter. But happy to have our monarch here. So I'll pass it over to the town clerk if she looks at that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Miss Furnish, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor chairman. I've got one question for everyone here. Who, for reference to Ramsgate Football Ground, who actually owns the land? Not who's renting it, who owns it. Now, the reason why I'm saying it, I'm getting... Whether it's true, what I'm telling you here and now, whether it's true or whether it's not true, whether it's smoke and mirrors, I don't know. This is why I've come to ask yourselves about it, to find out actually, in your capacity as Ramsgate council. Now, I have been a neighbour of Ramsgate council nearer 50 years than 40. So I've got history. And most of it is excellent, no problem whatsoever, they're good neighbours. Now, as I said, the only problem I've got is the ownership of the land. People tell me, old Ramsgateonians tell me, that the land was given to the people of Ramsgate to do only one thing, is for sports or outdoor activities in that area. Now, in the 90s I think it was, it was a second attempt, since I've lived in my house, to put houses on there. And I think it was about 69 dwellings they wanted to put on it. Thannick District Council agreed. Then MP was all for it, because I knew the man personally, yes, oh I know this, that was a fact. And it was going through sweet as a nut, until the honoursman was involved. Now, who invited the honoursman onto this, onto that subject, I don't know, and it was held up. The honoursman found out that that land can only be used for sports activities. I say sports activities, football, whatever, right? Can only be doing that. In every report I was told, that it stated. Now, what, where he got the information from, I don't know. What, was the land belonging to Thannick District Council and only had that scenario put on it? But, the land I was told was under the stewardship of Ramsgate District Council. So in other words, I could leave a chair to Ramsgate District Council for the use of people from Ramsgate. But it was left in a will apparently, so we've been told. Again, I'm saying what people are saying on the streets. This is, I think, the only way your kind of yourself probably would hear it, unless you go out and find out for yourself. This is it, I do not know. Now, the honoursman stopped it because of that scenario, it can only be used. Previous to that, the first time I was there, when they started to try and want to build on it, it was stopped again for some reason, the council withdrew it, for some reason, don't know. That's the first time. The second time, as I said before, the honoursman was stepped in. Now, there is, the Ramsgate Football Ground, I put my flagpole up, nailed my flag to the flagpole. What Ramsgate Football Club committee's doing now is fantastic. Really is, in my opinion, first class. They're encouraging young people to come along, they've got, they've got funding for fantastic, good facilities, fantastic facilities. And they've got a good business plan. They have done me no harm at all. Now, they've improved a hell of a lot. I can understand why they want to buy the land to improve their facilities. But most of all, in my opinion, is it to borrow money so they can improve their facilities?
Mr Furnish, you've now had five minutes, can I ask you to wind up please?
Yes, certainly so, certainly so. My wind up is, there's a win-win situation, and I'm quick in talking here. There is a win-win situation where Thannick District Council has made a precedent with Northfallon Golf Club. Northfallon Golf Club was owned, the land was owned by Thannick District Council. I believe it was about 1999, 2000, they wanted to borrow money on it. But they couldn't because it's such a short lease. So Thannick District Council gave them a 125-year lease. And they borrowed money and done a fantastic clubhouse. Now, I've got no objection to, in my opinion, to someone organising a lease for 125 years for, if they wanted to borrow on that, they could improve the facilities. But the main thing is, that land will be honoured. It'd be, Ramsgate, people of Ramsgate will own that, okay? The one thing, what frightens me the most, is if that committee, and I'm sure it's never happened, God forbid, because it's happened to Derby.
I do need you to wind up please.
Happened to Derby, and it happened even worse than Burnley, not Burnley, but, anyway, another football club. Went broke, they had to set up all the land and everything. If it was freehold, they can do that, and Ramsgate will lose the facilities of this land. I hope I've put my question up, thank you very much for your patience, sir. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. I can answer some of your, some of your issues. But what I am going to do is ask the town clerk to look into the sale of that land for Ramsgate Football Club. Because the land has been sold by Thannick District Council to Ramsgate Football Club. Now, my understanding is, as part of the sale, the same as there was for Margate Football Club, that there is clauses within the contracts of sale, that it must remain either as a football club or for any other community use. So what I will do, I've already talked to the town clerk, and she will look into it, and she will get back to you within a week or so. And so we will ask Thannick District Council, what is within the contracts of sale? And must it remain as a football club or whatever? Well, yes, you've got one, right, don't you?
That's no problem at all. If for any reason, I had a word with councillor Green here. If for any reason that something turns up in the future, that it belongs to the people of Ramsgate, and I know Thannick District Council is the mothership, if you... And is it illegal, was it legally done? Was there enough...
If you bear with me a second, councillor Hammond, he's very historical.
In the Borough of Ramsgate Records, that are currently being digitalised by the Ramsgate Heritage Regeneration Trust, in box 328, there are loads of records, old Borough records, on Ramsgate Football Club. I mean, if this box can be retrieved, then obviously you might find the information you're looking for.
But I think what we need to, I need to finish this up, Mr Furnish, and very grateful for your participation. So we will get, the town clerk will get back to you within a week or so. Depending on how quick Thannick District Council...
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so we'll get back on you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr Furnish, very grateful for your input.
Thank you, thank you.
By all means, you may stay or you may go if you so wish. Thank you very much, thank you. Bye-bye. Item 3.2, reports from district councillors on matters directly related to Ramsgate, is there...
Nothing to...
Anybody who wants to... No, it's the answer to that. And also...
Chair, please, I wanted to just mention, we did have quite an interesting briefing from councillor Pugh at the overview and scrutiny meeting last night, bringing us up to speed with the levelling up monies and so on and things. And some of those do clearly affect Ramsgate, not least off the top of my head, the allocation of monies for the port area. I did ask him at the meeting if he would provide the slides that went along with that meeting, so that people who were not there, first of all, we can see the slides, but it might be good if we had a set of them electronically sent to the town clerk, so that anybody from this council who's not aware of what the presentation was, can actually see what was happening.
Thank you for that, just to say that I do have a levelling up meeting, representing Ramsgate Town Council on that tomorrow afternoon. And I will let you, as, we haven't had one for two months. I will come back to you on exactly what that is, I will notify all councillors of what the result of that is. There are a number of issues that need discussion, that councillor Austin and I, with the town promoter, discussed the other day in relation to the town square, whatever you want to call it, piazza, joining up with the road and down to the other. But that's linked with other funding, so that's a very difficult situation. Also, issues relating to Newington, where they're asking for the money that they want, because they can move forward with it. So I want to ask them to do that. So I will let you know what the outcome of that is following that. Thank you councillor Piper. Sorry?
We, this council are in the same position as Newington regarding the possibility of TDC using Ranford House.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's part of it, David, I didn't go into everything, but certainly.
Chair, we also asked about business plans and business cases, which I ask about at every meeting about in relation to this. And we were assured that these had now been developed, and there was no reason why they should not be shared with councillors. And we pressed the point that we also need to be sharing a great deal more information with residents, because if residents aren't seeing something physically happening, they at least need to know when it's going to happen.
Agreed, totally.
I'm sure you'll be pushing those points as well.
Councillor Green?
I also asked a question about scrutiny of money, and I've forgotten about 500k to Newington, because I focused on the bandstand in Margate and the 4 million to Dreamland. And it appears that the money is not given straight to them, they get it, they deliver a project and then they get the money back. So apparently the tax has to use, but Chris Blundell assured us that this is all in the public domain. So I do think it's important for us to scrutinise what some of the money is spent on, because it's a significant amount of money, and at the minute, none of us really know what this money is being used for.
But I will give you a point pointing once we've had the meeting.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. No county councillors are here, so move on to item four, which is minutes of council meeting. I proposed that we approve the minutes of the meeting on the 28th of September.
You weren't there Chair.
I weren't there, so I can't.
I was there, yes, yes, I proposed it.
And a second please, all in favour, please, Joe? Thank you.
Chair, just a quick point on that, it's got, no apologies received councillor O'Shea, councillor O'Shea was on holiday, and he did mention it beforehand.
Okay.
Obviously it never got...
We'll change that.
Yeah, you're approving the minutes with an amendment, which I'll deal with for you.
I'm giving your apologies if you'd like.
Thank you. Item five, which is finance including grants, item 5.1, I'll pass you over to the deputy town clerk.
Thank you Chair, you've got two documents here, one is for payments under a thousand pounds, which is the remit of the town clerk to approve. Total, this is through from August, September and to last week. Total approved was 5,338.32. If you've got any queries, please ask me, otherwise this is to note, so I need a proposal, a second to note these please.
Members, any issues in relation to it?
Propose we note them Chair.
Thank you. Seconda? All in favour of noting the report? Carried, thank you very much.
Thank you Chair. The second document attached to this is the back page. These are payments over a thousand pounds, which are not within the remit of the town clerk to authorise, and council needs to agree these. Total is 44,363.67. You will notice that there's a confidential section, which is just over 13,900. These are made up of wages HMRC and KCC pension fund, which are not, they're kept as confidential, thank you.
Councillor Green?
Just curious, libel and slander item.
Which one?
Libel, libel and slander.
We have never had the insurance cover broken down, it's always just been a lump that you see. But we asked them to break it down, and that is what they gave us, so we are covered for libel, libel and slander.
Do we get to look into what Mr McKinley said about the Ramsgate Town Council?
But our insurance doesn't cover the MP.
Oh, doesn't cover the MP, okay, just a thought.
We need a proposal and a second please.
Okay, proposal and a second please. That's an X C, and councillor Havington. All in favour of noting? Thank you very much, it's carried.
Thank you Chair.
Right, 5.2, to receive a written report from a deputy town clerk, finance officer, in respect of the Ramsgate Fund and Events Fund, and make decisions in respect of the three grant applications contained therein.
The first two are for the Ramsgate Fund. The budget for Ramsgate Fund for this financial year is 35,000. The maximum amount which may be awarded is 10% of the fund, or 3,500 pounds. Awards to date total, 21,639.25, don't know where that 25 comes from. Balance remaining is 13,367.5. Following the Ramsgate Fund application decisions, there is an application to the Events Fund, which exceeds the balance remaining within that budget. You may wish to think about that when we get to it, whether we need to wire some money over. So the first application is RF9 from beyond the page. The grant request is for 3,500 pounds, and the total projected expenditure is 13,520.50. This is part from the salary of an ESOL facilitator and funding towards venue hire.
Excuse me, what is an ESOL facilitator?
Speakers of other languages, English for speakers of other languages.
Thank you very much.
The applicant states that the weekly sessions are held at the corner, and there are currently 16 women attending of a variety of nationalities. The majority are mothers, and thus play a key role in the successful integration and education of their children. The additional confidence gained in the language often results in further vocational skills training and/or regular employment. Council to decide please.
Members, any comments at all? Councillor Austin?
I strongly support this. Time was, that government funding was available for people who wanted to improve their English, integrate into society and whatever. Now that is specifically only for people who are job seekers and are benefit claimants. So if you're not, if you're an unwaged person, out of the labour market or whatever, it's really difficult to access this kind of support. And it's very difficult to take a proper part in society without a decent level of English. So projects like this are invaluable.
Anybody else, any comment? Councillor Green?
Until recently, we were adamant that we would support services for the big group. I think that, I think the criteria have now changed, is that correct?
The criteria was changed, and an addition was put into the criteria, which said should normally be used for capital items, which gives council a bigger scope for spending this fund.
On the other hand, this does sound very good scheme. Running from a corner, which is in a world...
Very disadvantageful.
Really, grant funds too. So, in this one occasion, I think I would support.
Thank you, councillor Havington?
For the same reasons that David said, I mean, the corner seems to run very good programmes there. And this is, if we're talking about these are mothers, then it's the whole family impacted by this. Language skills will improve too, it makes them more employable and able to, you know, at school.
Absolutely agree, councillor Nixey?
I prefer to give the full amount that they're asking for able. I've worked with ESOL in my teaching career, and educating the mothers and getting them able to talk just has so many of effects, I'm sure everybody else is going to explain that to you. It's absolutely imperative that we help on that one, so I propose for the...
Thanks, seconded, okay.
I think our experience from our Ukrainian friends, and the meeting today, there were very few Ukrainian people actually attended the meetings, because they've benefited from some, first of all, some free basic English lessons, which we've been managed to, not me deliver, because I'm useless at this sort of thing, but somebody else volunteering the communities done, and then step up to, and I know there are a couple on this thing. And I think it's even more important that they're mothers, because very often mothers are trapped at home with childcare. So I think it's really, it's really important that mothers are able to take their children to this facility and access these lessons. And our experience again with Ukrainians is, most of them have, because they've improved their English, are now employed. And we have drastic shortages in a lot of, in a lot of our areas locally.
Thank you, we have a proposal and a seconda, so I'm asking that all in favour of it? Pay the full amount? Thank you, any against? Any abstentions? No, thank you, let's carry, thank you.
Thank you Chair. The balance is 9,860 within the Ramsgate Fund. The second application is RF10 Royal Temple Yacht Club. They're requesting a thousand pounds, projected expenditure is 1,400. It's for Christmas lighting arrays for boats, including the Orinna Light and Heritage Craft, and for local advertising. This is an annual event in December through to January, council to decide, thank you.
I think it's a no-brainer, I think we're all, I think we'd all go with that.
But we've paid them before for this.
Not the same every year.
I mean, I think given the increase, the increase in fuel, in electricity costs, we just, I'd like to provide, give them the full amount.
That's already been... Seconda, yeah, seconda. Sorry, councillor Green?
I think I've asked in previous years whether we could ask for a breakdown of what they actually spend it on.
Can I ask for that? Yeah, no, it's not a problem. All in favour, Joe? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you Chair, the balance of the Ramsgate Fund is now 8,860, thank you. Okay, your next application is from the Events Fund. The Events Fund budget was 60,000, there's no maximum amount that can be awarded. However, we only have 4,962.94 left.
Just going to change that budget, councillor Havington's leaving.
I was listening through to Kiall.
We have one application from Arts in Ramsgate. The grant requested is 10,960, the projected expenditure is 19,960. It's for funding towards the Ramsgate Winter Lantern Parade between 4 and 6pm on Thursday, the 22nd of December. I don't know whether you want to discuss this first, or speak to the lady that is present?
Is it your good self?
Yeah.
If you could just give us an idea of what's going to happen, that would be fantastic.
I would like to, I'd like to explain that I'm afraid I have to break through to Arnold, which is there.
Do you want to go and stand there?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
I was with me, I'm here instead of Gemma from Arts in Ramsgate, because we're developing the proposal with partnership, and Gemma's recuperating from illness still, so it's me. But, really, the heart of this proposal is that we are providing workshops, two a week, sometimes more, running from the 9th of November through to the 22nd. And the first week of the holidays, all-day workshops for those three days, right? And it's here that the arts work, and the lantern work, and the drumming workshop, and will all take place. But when I wrote the, when Gemma and I wrote, to be fair, what we saw is the benefits of the town. And we didn't really mention, like, what are miserable Christmas people are facing. And that this is a whole space, you know, it's activity for whole families. It's activities for the adolescent special educational needs community, that we've got good relationships with, who are not well catered for. So, of course, we want to produce a really lovely, fabulous event for town, that's magical, and is a lifetime memory, and is free, and you don't have to pay, like, if you're going to all the car market castle, or if you're going to do... You know, there's lots of families that won't be able to afford to take their kids anywhere. But it's also about having a weekly, twice-weekly presence in the town, where there's a space people can come, that's well-resourced, got good teachers, got good activity, somewhere you're warm and welcome, and we'll be providing oxygen drinks. So I just wanted to emphasise those points.
Okay, can I just, can I just ask you, I mean, what would be the majority of the nearly 11,000 pounds that you're after going to, what is it spent on? Is it anything specific?
It's in my phone. Well, some of, it's sort of a mixture of things, isn't it? I broke it down, we broke it down in the budget into categories. Starting workshops, yes, I mean, the lantern and head duster, spectacle sessions, materials. Construction fees, parade day staff costs. And making drinks and so on. Regularly Carnival has already got a lottery fund that's going into this project, right? And that will pay primarily for the drumming teacher setting up the drumming workshop, and that bit of the project. But it will also make a contribution to the materials. and that bit of the project, that will also make a contribution to the materials. So the rest of it is really for the lessons, the space, the art materials and to run, to run that extensive workshop programme.
Thank you very much.
Theresa, we've already.
Uh, sorry.
Sorry. May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
We've already put some money into drumming workshops, haven't we? How do those overlap?
You haven't. You've put the money into buying.
Into buying the kits. Right, great. Thank you.
The drums.
Okay.
So we're going to change the workshops.
Thank you. councillor Green?
Could I ask through you? We have money set aside for Christmas, a Christmas event. Do you know how much that is?
For our Christmas, yeah, we've set aside ten thousand pounds and that's within the miscellaneous budget. Council agreed that it would come from there. But due to the Jubilee etcetera, the sixty thousand pound has diminished within the Events Fund. That's part of the issue with it this year. We spent a lot of money on.
That money set aside for Christmas is still there?
It's still safe. That is within the miscellaneous budget. So it's, you, council removed it from the Events Budget.
Yeah, we did.
Members, any other comments? councillor Wing?
I mean, this has got my full support and I'd like to ensure that it gets the full amount of money because the A Centre is a terrific base. It always has been and now it's in a credible space. And the Lantern Parade has always been something exceptionally magical that involves, involves families working together to create, to create things which look stunningly beautiful on a winter's night.
Do you wish to make a proposal?
What I'm saying is, can we, can we wire some of the money from somewhere else where we've got, maybe got pots? Maybe councillor Green has just mentioned the Christmas, the Christmas budget.
Yeah, we do have some, we do have something that we could take from elsewhere.
The Ramsgate Fund?
Yes, would you please?
Okay, we, I'll make that proposal then. My proposal is we give them the full amount and try and wire.
A second then.
From the, from the.
That's all right, a second.
Sorry, Steve.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Through you, Chair. The money that is set aside for the two council events is to be used on those. That's within the miscellaneous. What you have left in your Events Fund is just over four thousand nine hundred. What you have left within your Ramsgate Fund is just over eight thousand eight hundred. You could fire from the Ramsgate Fund. However, you still have November through to March meetings where people could come through for Ramsgate Fund, funding applications. You could in theory use the Ramsgate Fund money combined with your Events Fund money tonight. And then if you do get further applications in, take it from there. You do, you do now meet monthly, so you can look at applications monthly. So it's entirely up to council. Thank you.
Members, any thoughts? councillor.
I think I'm concerned about going over the budget. We know that we've got just shy of five thousand pounds. And I'm happy to say that, that we say yes to that at that level. But all of the talk of moving money from here, there and everywhere, I think we actually need to perhaps come back next month with that to find out whether or not we can do that. I'm just a bit concerned about how we, how we achieve that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? councillor Green?
I have an alternative proposal if councillor Wing's thought. And that is that we take three thousand pounds from our own Christmas budget, add it to the four thousand nine hundred and sixty two that we've got left in the Events Fund and make that our grant.
Which would be, what would be the total?
The total will be seven thousand nine hundred and sixty two ninety four if you use the full amount.
Excuse my sense. Interesting.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm of the view that we should be giving the full amount because this is an exceptional thing. What worries me however, is that, is the business of precedence. So I think we would have to be quite clear that this is because of exceptional reasons that we want to give such a large amount because we don't have this kind of amount to give to many other activities. So I, I think we would need to make it quite clear to base it on which we work.
So got to be prudent.
Yeah.
councillor Nixie?
I think if councillor Wing's proposal first has said, and would we then go with councillor Green? I, I fully support this idea, especially in the sense that it is above and beyond just Lantern Parade workshops. It is a warm space.
It's fantastic.
That's something that we would be budgeting anyway. So to be able to get some extra money to put towards it, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. So ideally, I'd like to give them as much money as we are capable of giving them. Whatever that money is, I'll go with the majority. But I do support this and for that extra element of what this council would want the community to be doing as well.
From the Chair, I would, my own personal view will be to go with councillor Green, no disrespect, but to go with what councillor Green was proposing and then to work with the town clerk to see if we could get money from elsewhere and with the Chair of Finance if we could, if we could do that. But anyway, that's beside the point. councillor Piper?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question really. It is obviously a lot of money and I guess we'll see how successful it is when it happens. Is this likely to become an annual request for something in the region of ten grand to put this event on every year? Or is this, this one to get all the stuff together for what they need and it'll be much?
Let's ask. Let's ask. Thank you.
I can ask her through.
Okay, yes.
No, to be honest, we're aware we can't come back and ask this again. We do want to make it into a spectacular event that the town can be proud of and work to the lines. But giving us a good start this year, the UC Society, Arts Council funding and lottery funding brokered into this event next year. So I do hope to use the photographic record, the evidence, scattered people's statements to broker in new funds for the event in future.
Thank you.
councillor Law?
Could we know what production fees mean and what are they for and how much are they?
Sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
Production fees and how much are they?
Sorry, because I don't keep it in my head. I have to quickly look up what.
That's all right, yeah.
It's all different things, you know. We do have professional stewards seeing the parade across the road. We're not closing the road permanently, it's a rolling road closure. So we've got to employ stewards who are qualified to hold the traffic. So we don't know what the full costs are. We're still waiting for our costs back. We've asked for a few quotes. Just the technical things of helping people into, we're hoping to bring over one of the Kent Giants. And it would be like people stewarding there, putting its lights on, rigging pieces, putting big backpacks on. We'll have some infrastructure, costumes on the parade and things like that. So it's, it's the production work of making sure you've got your batteries, all work tested, fitted in properly, the health and safety aspects of it. The job I do basically, I'm the producer and believe you me, I work every single day on it. You know, so it's all those things.
Thank you very much. Thank you. councillor Huxley, you have your answer?
It seems a lot of money to me. I don't really, I don't know why it's so expensive. I think we should just give them the four thousand nine hundred and sixty two pounds and ninety four pence and that's the end of the fund.
Thank you. councillor Crittenden, I'm in.
I'm just picking up on the phrase hoping to. We've been caught out before under hoping to and it hasn't happened. So if that element doesn't happen, is there, and there is a shortfall in the spend, shall we say, would we have that money back? Through the Chair. Because, I mean, this has happened before where it was, things were suggested would happen and then they didn't happen for reasons completely out of the organisers' control maybe.
We can make, we can make that a stipulation.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I'm sorry. You did a hoping to.
We can make that a stipulation of, of the, of the money given. We can do that. And councillor Wing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how many people around this table have actually organised an event for the community, but I can tell you as the Chair of Addington Street had to cancel the event because of escalating costs. We did, and we did pay our two thousand back to Ramsgate Town Council. Terry in the corner isn't just somebody who's magically appeared within our community. Terry's been within this community for a significant number of years and has always delivered when she's promised she's going to do something. I can tell you road closure, the road closure for Addington Street alone went from a hundred and eighty pounds to well over a thousand. So I'm telling you that ten thousand pound for an event that is going to last for two months, it, it is not, they're not asking for an awful lot actually. And there is significant costs that relate to first aid, road closures. So I think this is good value for money. It also includes that, that warm space that we were so concerned about as well.
Thank you councillor Wing. We have a proposal which has been seconded. And that is for the full amount to be paid. And is that to come from, that comes from the Events Fund and what's left over from the Ramsgate Fund? Which makes?
Ten thousand nine hundred and sixty. So you have enough money within those two funds.
So we have enough money. Well, sorry.
Request for clarification.
About what?
We actually had a second suggestion from councillor.
Yeah, but we've got to deal with the first.
Can I finish my sentence, please? If we, request for clarification, if we want us to talk councillor Green's proposal, we have to vote against councillor Wing's proposal. I just wanted to make sure that, because we've had these, we've had these problems, we've had these problems before. So I, I wanted to clarify it.
Been around long enough to know that that is the case anyway.
No, actually, it's good clarification. Don't get it wrong. Thank you.
Councillor Green, last one.
Could I just caution council that we have invited Salvation Army to make a Ramsgate Fund showcase. They haven't done so yet, but they still might.
Okay. Right, we have a proposal and this has been seconded for, for, to pay the full, the full amount on this item.
Thank you.
All of those in favour, please? Four of those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's obviously lost. Second proposal.
Is that we allocate the four thousand nine hundred and sixty two pounds ninety four pence from the Events Fund plus three thousand pounds from our Christmas fund as a, as a allocation to this event.
Can I just say something?
Bear in mind that our Christmas fund was for events at Christmas and this is an event at Christmas.
Councillor Green, our Christmas fund, ten thousand pounds, is for the switch on, Christmas lights and also for the firework display. So you will be reducing that by three thousand pounds, so it will go down to seven. Just, just as a caution, but then we can, we can move on at the next council, maybe and try and sort something out.
There's a seconda. Anybody seconding, please? councillor Nixie's seconding.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all aware of what you're now going to vote on or not, as the case may be? Yes, please.
The total will be seven thousand nine hundred and sixty two pounds and ninety four pence. Thank you.
May I just ask a question to Terry? If we don't give you the full amount, would you be able to do the event?
Well, things will reduce, do you mean in the proposal? And we'll go back and look. Obviously, we still want to deliver. We've got great, great life found memories, great workshops. So it'll either be reducing the number of workshops or we'll be cutting out the bonfire and the food at the end.
Three thousand pounds on.
We'll do it.
Okay. Right, we have a proposal and a seconda. All in favour, please show? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Those against? Two, three. That's carried. Thank you. Right, stay on item five, item five point three.
You're welcome to say if you don't.
Come back councillor Everington, all is forgiven.
You're welcome. Thank you for your explanation.
No hiding in there councillor Everington, come out. Right, I'll pass over to the deputy town clerk, please.
Thank you, Chair. The town promotion committee has asked the council via twelve thousand pounds from the miscellaneous budget to the town beautification budget in order to progress with plans to install decorative lighting on the harbour arches in the, within the current financial year. There is now insufficient funds in the miscellaneous budget for this environment. And the town clerk has suggested the potential alternative budget could be used and that is the capital projects and asset acquisitions, which currently has just over one million one hundred in, within that budget. But it is, is intended for Ramsgate, sorry, Radford House. Council, do decide, please. Thank you.
Members, any comments, please? I made from, sorry councillor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure that we should use money from the Radford House. I don't think that's appropriate. The money that was bequeathed to Ramsgate Town Council was meant for that building or whatever we chose to keep that building, get it up and up. And I don't think it's appropriate to take money from there for the lights.
Thank you very much. councillor Green?
That budget for Radford House includes the request, but the request isn't, isn't the whole of that. At the moment, it is not planned to spend that amount of money on Radford House. What is planned is considerably less than that. That doesn't mean though that with the way costs of various things are rising at the moment, that at least some of that money, that's a large portion of that money will be required. And also, I don't think that, well certainly that amount of money won't be spent this financial year. We could look at it again when we set our precept next year. So speaking as Chair of F and G P, I think we could do this without risking the Radford House project if, if council feels we should.
Okay, thank you.
I just wondered how, how short we are.
Expect this.
We need. How, how much more money we need?
For?
For this town beautification project.
Councillor, we actually need the twelve thousand.
Also, we need all of it?
We need twelve thousand. The miscellaneous budget can't, can't deal with it. The town promotion committee budget, miscellaneous budget can't cope with it. So the twelve thousand literally is wired from the capital projects and asset acquisitions balance.
Oh, I see.
As, as per the.
That's a lot.
Is there nothing left in the miscellaneous budget?
Unfortunately, I do not have those figures.
councillor Crittenden?
I was actually going to ask exactly the same question, how much is in the miscellaneous budget and what's the difference between that and twelve thousand? So that, that was exactly the question councillor making.
Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I'm literally covering this meeting. I haven't been.
Because I, I mean, it would be helpful to know that.
Sorry, if I could just come in here, I, I think we would all like the lights.
Yeah, yeah.
In the arches, we think that that would be an ideal thing.
Yes.
And my own view is I would, I would support what the town clerk has said and, and for us to give the twelve thousand in relation to this. And as councillor Green has said, you know, that the Radford House money is not going to be spent this year. So we will have next year's budget and we could look at that and then top that up. So I'm proposing that we accept it.
And I'll second that.
Councillor Wing, second it. All in favour, please show? Thank you. Those against? Two. Thank you. That's carried. Thank you very much.
Chair, what I can.
Abstentions?
Abstentions? Sorry councillor Execk, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave.
And I think councillor, I think Viper abstained.
Yeah, he'd abstain as well. You tell him he's abstaining. Councillor Green, did you want to say something? Okay, he's abstaining as well. Okay.
Members did ask about the balance of the miscellaneous budget, which I will find out for you tomorrow and. Um, members did ask about the balance of the miscellaneous budget, which I will find out for you tomorrow and circulate it within an email, thank you.
Thanks very much. Right, item, uh, item four of item five. Um, to consider the quote from Guardian Security and Fire to install CCTV at the Chiltern Lane allotment site. This quote was previously, uh, considered by the F and G P committee. And it was of the councillor Green will find out more information which is now, which he has undertaken, can I just let?
Yeah, um, members, uh, I cannot advise you detail of why we need CCTV at this, um, allotment site. But I must advise you that it's quite urgent that we do get this fitted at some point soon, thank you.
Councillor Green?
I've visited the site, I've spoken to the site rep. And I am convinced that the site does need CCTV because of some of the goings on that, uh. Take place on that site, also. Um, we have to allow access to the person that owns the piece of land. Adjacent to the, uh, to the site. And as he's now got it up for sale. Um, by auction. Uh, he is a known various people. Who, uh, uh, in order to view that, that piece of land.
Understand it's been sold.
Perfect, well, so, just, just, you've taken, um, the reason away, but. It was another reason for, but just another reason.
I th- I think as well, I, I think my concerns are, uh. Concerns, but I think knowledge, need knowledge of. Who, are, are this company that we're paying, are they going to monitor the, um, our CCTV?
Yeah.
So they will.
The hard drive monitor.
So they'll provide the recorder, the hard drive. Monit- them, and the monitor, so that appears that that monitor then may be coming here, but then. We would only look at that monitor.
If there was an issue.
Really look at it if there is an issue, wouldn't we, so.
Absolutely.
That would be, yeah, okay, thank you.
Members, the, um, allotments budget can handle the payment for this equipment, thank you.
Members?
In answer, I mean, I don't think it's.
No, it won't.
No, but we.
It's going to be recorded, yeah?
Yeah, that's what I meant by, but it would be on the monitor, it was a monitor, I was referring to, not monitoring it. Councillor Crindon?
What about the costs ongoing, are there, their ongoing costs year on, or is, what's that situation?
I think, sorry Chair, I think that, that would be a question if there's a breakdown or something like that, because it's not being monitored. Someone twenty-four hours a day, nothing or anything, so the ongoing costs would depend on whether it's been vandalised or, um, there is a fault in it. So what, we wouldn't actually know what that would be.
So there wouldn't be an annual contract or anything?
No, 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 this is a one-off, this is a one-off, you know, and it sits and, and it records.
Yeah.
I say blindly, but it's, you know.
So there is likely to be ongoing costs, but it, it will come from vandalisation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or breakdowns or whatever, rather than anything, if it works perfectly.
Okay, sorry, can we not talk here please? Uh, councillor Green, will you come back?
Would be added to insurance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to propose this from, from the Chair, another seconder councillor Austin. Um, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's unanimous, oh, did, or, oh, anybody against? Thank you, any abstentions? Thank you, that's carried. Right, uh, item six is collections policy and, and hopefully you've seen the report. That councillor Avenden has kindly refused. In relation to collections of, um, Ramsgate's heritage and civic items. That were once the former property of the Ramsgate Chartered Trustees. Um. The res- the resolution of the report is that councillor Avenden, uh, proposes that Ramsgate Town Council adopt a collection management policy. With the purpose of restoring a town archive for future generations and the day-to-day working of the council. Is there anything you'd like to say councillor?
Uh, yeah, it's only one thing, well, I've got loads of notes, I mean, I've really well researched this. One thing we've got to look into is the fact that we need a management policy cover for two hundred thousand items that have now been identified in the papers of Radford House. And needs really needs, you know, a good management policy.
Okay. Councillor?
Thank you Chair, um, personally, I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done on this. Prior to joining this council.
Indeed.
Uh, it's known to many, but perhaps not the public who might be listening in this evening, that this has been in the interest of yours for some time. And I think the town does owe a bit of gratitude for what you've done so far. My question, Chair, please.
Yes.
Um. I, I mean, I thought, we need a policy, who's going to write it?
Uh, well, I, I understand of having a quick chat with the town clerk, I think the town clerks, uh, would kind of take that on. And to see from other councils, obviously if she worked for Sandwich, they would have a, maybe a similar thing that, that, that she would be able to do, so, um.
That's fine, thank you Chair, which case I'd like to.
My actual concern is, is where will it all go? You know, where will we store it, or will it have to be stored in a proper conditions and everything like that, but I think that's, first of all, we need to get the first step and let's get a, and let's get a policy.
Top of Radford House?
Carbon boxes, top of Radford House, yeah. Councillor Huxley?
Long, long time ago, when dinosaurs were roaming the earth, I worked in the British Library up in London. Oh, how lovely. Had to catalogue everything, so I did cataloguing. So this is, this is one of the steps, you have to catalogue all your items, otherwise nobody knows what's actually in it. Right, and things get lost and over the years they have got lost, have they not councillor?
I think they have.
Thanks.
Councillor Crindon, do you have your hand up?
I was just going to second.
Oh, okay, thank you, councillor Avenden.
Yeah, there's just one point I want to make, I've now got an update of so far what they've done on the Radford House papers. And there is so much information here that every single member here will find of interest. Uh, what I will do, I'll email it to every single member, so he can go through it, because he, he goes through everything. I mean, there's Newington, there's references to the collapse of Madeira Walk, there's load of Ryliss, uh, proclamations in there. And even lists the Will Sumerians on the fury, so obviously I'm really sort of my involvement, that might be.
Um, yes, Rob, can you wait and do that about Christmas, so I've got the time to read it? You could do that, you could do that Tony, uh, that'd be fine, sorry, who had downed, councillor Green?
There is some, there is some mention of Ramsgate. As I, as I mentioned earlier, uh, I've numbered it, I have the box number, because when that guy was speaking. And there is details on it. But you'll be surprised, the information that we are, that we are sitting on will be benefits the business of this council, you know.
Okay, uh. Sorry councillor Everington.
I'd like to thank you too Tony, because you certainly have hit the ground running, I echo what, um, councillor Piper said. And I've been really impressed with not only everything that you've done here, but you've been posting up on, you know, the various websites, uh, various sites in. On Facebook and various other things, which is getting people more and more interested in this.
Indeed.
Really helpful.
I have to say, I've learned a lot looking at this Facebook.
Yes, me too, yeah, so thank you.
Councillor Green and councillor Wing?
What a tragedy this is, downstairs council and TDC between them destroyed an equal amount of Ramsgate information.
I, I mean, I hated history until I moved to Ramsgate, and we walk around.
Well, you're part of it now, so.
We just walk surrounded by history and our heritage and it's important that, it's important that we've got a champion to help us save. What we've got and save it for future generations, so thank you Tony, can you support this?
Uh, members, I propose, um, that we note the report. But also ask the town clerk to proceed to look at other places where they have.
Sandwich.
A similar policy which, which would be sandwiched and then to, and then to work on that, I've proposed that.
You've already got a.
Second?
You've already got a.
Thank you, have we?
Yes, you were, councillor Piper proposed the resolution and councillor Crindon seconded.
Oh, well, I'll take it all back then. Well, anyway, we've got to propose a second, all in favour? Thank you, carried. That's brilliant, well done. Um, right, item seven, climate change, very important issue. Uh, item one of item seven is to consider if what response is required to Thanet District Council's net zero strategy. And hopefully, you've all, maybe have all seen it or, or looked on the website or whatever. Um, and, uh, the consultation ends on eleventh of November. Um, and a further report from the council's Climate Change Action Group, uh, in response to this consultation is to follow.
Um, Chair, I do not have that, um, document, that hasn't come to me yet, so all we have at the moment is the net zero strategy from TDC.
Okay, so, um, I think in, in, in that case. I, I think this is too much of an important item not to talk about. Um, but I think as a, moving on from that, I think we need to make a proposal. Um, but we can't do that until we've seen what the response of our, of our climate, um. Although, hang on a minute, although, although, although. I am sure. I've seen.
Those are the next two, ne- next two parts.
Uh, okay, okay, sorry, I'm looking at.
I know that at the task force of the recent useful meeting in the last, of, of, of the, our response was to be positively encouraged by the next zero strategy that Dr Hannah Scott has produced. Uh, and I don't know where the letter is, because they've had the letter with that on that day, didn't you? Or she.
Yeah, I don't.
The other letter, it's, it's.
We have, we have the, the other letter, she's another part to this item, but the actual report that I was due to receive. Um, I believe that the Chair of the, um, Climate Change Action Group was going to draft it and then, then share it with the group to get their comments, however, they only met, met on Thursday, I believe, last night. So they haven't had time to actually produce their report, but we only have a couple of weeks to respond.
Okay, um, does anyone want to make a proposal councillor Austin?
Can I propose that we, uh, wait to get that document from the Climate Change Task Group, but in the meanwhile, perhaps. The town clerk could write round to members and remind us that if we've got any ideas, any comments that we want to make individually, that could go into our response, we could send them through by email, would that be possible?
Of course.
It would be, and, um, yeah, because I think as, obviously as a council, we need to respond to the next.
I received some comments from residents, so I wanted to be able to feed those.
I mean, having, having read TDC's strategy itself, you know, I can't see anything wrong with it at all, I think it's very positive. Um, I, I don't know, I think it's something that we should support, but if anyone's got any extra items. In relation to the zero strategy, then, then they should put it in, councillor Huxley?
Yeah, I'm on that committee, it's called the Climate Change Cabinet Advisory Group.
Right.
CAG, it's not a, it's not an action group.
No, that's our, our action group, yeah.
No, you're talking RTC's action group.
RTC's action group and you're on the.
That's a bit confusing then.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay, well, anyway, the next meeting of the TDC, CAG, is Monday.
Okay.
So presumably then.
We've got until twenty seventh of November to respond. Sorry, I've, yeah, I've changed that.
Thank you Chair. Obviously, in as, in as far as we can go with this as a town council and as a district council. I'm supportive of lots of the measures that have been made, but we had a classic example the other night at TDC. Um, which I, I think I would just urge us a bit of caution of. TDC and indeed RTC can declare a climate emergency and can set a strategy and a policy for their own sphere of influence. What's happened at TDC, um, and one example of it the other night was, we were given the carbon footprint of each individual in Thanet approximately. But then that was compared to the world consumption of beef. We really are stepping outside, I believe that TDC and RTC can have a strategy, a zero strategy, can have a policy, can make it work. But in short, neither TDC nor RTC have the moral or legal authority to make Mr Piper want St James Avenue. Do to his house what they would like him to do to his house, so my concern, and that's all it is, is that we don't make this thing bigger. Than the boundaries of responsibility we actually have, TDC I think are doing that, they're making it too big. I wouldn't like RTC to go down the same road, thank you Chair.
Thank you, councillor Huxley?
The TDC net zero strategy is for.
For sure.
Thanet District Council's buildings.
Yes.
Cars, vehicles, um, staff. And in it, it does specifically say we can't do anything outside that, but they, what they're trying to do is to show as a council, Chair, that they. They're as a, an example, they make as an example of what other people can follow, so, you know, encouraging, for example. The tourist industry in Thanet, you know, say Bed and Breakfast Hotels to follow up a net zero strategy. So that you reduce carbon emissions, so as a way of, as a lead organisation. Therefore parish councils, all RTC for example, could do the same.
It's, it's an overall strategy.
It's not, it's not let's change.
Not picking on, not picking on councillor Piper. I've got a ball beat for anyone.
Yeah, that's where the meeting went the other night.
It's not.
We had a presentation of turning boilers down and thinking, I've been married forty-four years and the boiler in my house has never been higher than sixty degrees.
Oh.
So I didn't really need a ten-minute video on turning the.
Have you got your vest on?
Just to say, it's a very specific thing and we've worked very hard on this for, what, two years really, three years?
Well, I've got.
It's not trying to say to people, it's leading by example, it's not saying, you know, can, Mister Piper, you've got to turn your boiler down, you know. So it's, it's an inspirational thing.
Okay, I've got councillor Austin, Green.
Oh no, I was, I was after Trisha.
Oh, all right, I'll do you, I'll do it the other way round then. Oh, councillor Austin, councillor Wing, councillor Green, councillor Crindon. Okay, so, councillor Austin.
My understanding is that the standard way that a net zero strategy for an area is created is about different types of emissions, so you talk about what you're responsible for yourself, as councillor Crindon said. And then you look at what the other thing, other emissions are and the other issues in the area and, and you can see in the strategy that there are pie charts showing. Which bit is Thanet District Council, which bit is residents, which bit is industry, et cetera. And as councillor Huxley said, it's about helping and supporting and leading by example. It's not about telling people you've got to do this, that and the other, but it's about giving people ideas and strategies and information. So they can hopefully, uh, reduce their emissions, which will nearly always involve reducing their costs as well, which in the current climate is particularly valuable. So I would applaud that aspect of the strategy.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Wing?
I mean, I completely disagree with councillor Piper actually, and, and councillor Austin's right, there, there are three fears. There, there are, there are those things, those things you can control and you can, you can have them as an individual or, or as a group or as a local council or a school, so they're the things you can control. There are also the other things you can influence, that is about our sphere of influence, as councillor Hudson said, and then there are those things that you plan to control. And I think we have a duty not to tell people you should stop eating meat or you need to get on the bus rather than getting in the car. But to demystify what, what, uh, demystify how each, each one of us can look at, look at our lifestyles and make some simple changes. That, that do help the planet, you know, it's not saying China needs to reduce its emissions when we buy most of our goods from China, because we are actually feeding the, feeding the lion. Uh, and I actually found that, that, that the, the gecko eco thing in- incredibly useful and I'm now quite addicted to it. So even down to making sure I don't spend five minutes in the shower, I've got it down to two minutes, I'm still clean at the end. So these are the things, these are, these are the simple, the simple things that we can encourage people to do, not tell them to do. The last thing I want is to lose weight. The last thing I want is to police say.
That's the word, encourage.
Yes.
Thank you, Councillor Green. Councillor Green?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good policy, but like so many TDC policies, I mean, very often they're very good, but then they don't find their way into TDC's. And this, we, well, TDC councillors here make, to make sure that this does find its way into TDC's decision-making, particularly their purchasing policies.
Yep.
But also in the local planning review, which is their best, um, opportunity to influence the area.
And I've been banging on since, since we got elected, uh, with the local planning to ensure that we had solar panels on every new development. And it's never been adopted in its own, I don't know, you know, we're doing it, we're doing it, da, 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 da.
Something so simple as water consumption.
Exactly. Okay, uh, sure enough on me. Uh, I've got councillor Crittenden?
Yeah, two things. Picking up, um, councillor Piper raised it, um, about the meeting the other night. And, um, councillor Green has touched on the elements of it. But over fifty percent of the, um, achievement of reaching net zero is actually reducing consumption, um, from you and I, anyone sort of in this room. But that is really completely against, and this is a question that I raised in that, that briefing, um, against the other messaging is that you have to spend and consume in order to maintain the economy. So we are only a little voice saying, reduce consumption. There are much, much bigger pots of money behind advertising of big business that says, spend, spend, spend. And I remember at the, uh, a few years ago, when we were coming out of a recession, I remember reading somewhere, we need to get the Chinese to buy more of their own goods they produce because they're not consuming enough. So we actually have a real dynamic in, in achieving this. Um, and the other thing I, so there's just a comment on it. Um, and it, it does make zero nigh on impossible because we haven't got the budgets that the, the big businesses have. But also at the end of that presentation was the, there's, um, an online, uh, survey for residents, including ourselves, to sign up to where you can actually comment on that. Um, so perhaps we need to promote that as well because there is a chance, um, for everyone in the community to make their, those kinds of comments.
But I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure the Prime Minister's got it all covered. Um, councillor Huxley?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Uh, I think the problem, as councillor Green said, was, um, money from central government is a problem to finance all these things. Um, the bit I know the most about is about TDC housing. They are going to put in retrofitting. Insulation is the main thing. So they've got a forty million pound budget from the government and they're going to do that in the next two years.
Brilliant.
So that's for some of their housing stop, but not for all of it. But that is going to, as councillor Green was saying, this policy is going to go through everything at TDC, procurement, management, senior management, I mean, how they, how they interact.
Have we got?
Within the council. This is the RTC table as well. We can, we can use this strategy at RTC's.
Okay, thank you. Um, members, I want to. We've got a proposal, which is.
Councillor Austin proposed that we wait for the, uh, CCTG report, which is our, the action group report, and for myself to email councillors for comments. You need a seconder.
Seconder. Councillor Ara, all in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Any against? Any abstention? Lovely, thank you. Um, okay, uh, item, uh, two of seven is to consider and approve a letter that's been drafted by the Climate Change Action Group.
Thank you, uh, Chair. This, uh, letter, which I presume you've all seen, is with regard to the grant of a DCO for the development of a new cargo hub airport at Mansfield. The, uh, Chair of the Ramsgate Town Climate Change Action Group, so she's called it task group, is a member of the public and therefore this letter needs to go out under the, uh, remit of obviously from our Chair. Um, and council is asked to approve that or not?
Not.
Thank you.
It's a case, mate. Councillor Green?
I advise the Action Group that they couldn't send this to the council. On behalf of the town council, that it had to come through. Either from GP or, or council for approval. Um, I'd just propose that we change the intended recipient.
It's just not the minister, anyway. This week's minister.
Can I, um, I, I just want to make a comment on this, and, and that is that, um, the letter is asking for the Secretary of State, effectively, to change their mind. Um, and to be quite honest, personal view, to be quite frank, it doesn't carry any weight at all. Um, and.
I'm making this petition.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. And, and my own view on that, my, my, my view on that is that I would prefer, I would prefer, and I would prefer the council to wait until such time as the, um, whether we know another judicial review is to take place. And if that is the case, then we can write that in support of the, of the judicial review, if that is what the council wants. But I see no point in sending that now. That's just my personal view. Okay, thank you. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree. Um, and I think this has its value as a letter from an individual, but not, uh, either from this council. I agree with councillor, uh, Green, what he said just a moment ago. But I don't think the council can support this. Uh, I don't want to open a massive can of worms, but there's an awful lot of stuff in here which doesn't pass scrutiny tests. But it does give us a classic example of my previous point on the previous matter. The writer says Ramsgate Town Council declared a climate emergency and the council has committed to net zero by twenty fifty. The redevelopment of polluting cargo have less than four kilometres from our offices and less than one and a half kilometres from some of our residents make this commitment impossible. That demonstrates to me they don't understand that Ramsgate Town Council has the authority to deal with its own carbon footprint. It can advise and encourage others, but to say it makes Ramsgate Town Council's commitment to net zero impossible is simply not true. It doesn't affect the council offices and us as an institution in the way this writer is saying. So that's just an example of the point I was making earlier.
I do take, I do take what you're saying on that. How's your councillor Rezeki?
Yeah, obviously, uh, Chair, as you can imagine, I'm totally against the letter. Um, one reason is that, is that this has been hooked into climate change and everything. And for every aircraft that you divert into Manston that's not going to Heathrow or Gatwick, you're saving over an hour's flying time. So surely it's better for, for the world's benefit to have Manston open and get more aircraft to go in there rather than to go as far away as Heathrow and Gatwick where you're looking at between an hour and an hour and a half extra flying and taxiing time.
Things where it's coming from, I guess.
Yes.
The direction it's coming from. Uh, councillor Green, then councillor Makins.
I don't know where it's at.
Councillor Green?
Shall I go first?
Yes.
Councillor Makins?
I wanted to immediately respond because you said that before councillor Rezeki. Now, how, when they unload the cargo planes into lorries, how do the, how do the goods get to Poundland in Ramsgate House Street? How do they get to wherever they're supposed to be going? Surely a million lorries, not a million, a load of lorries are going to be much more polluting and much more damaging to our roads.
Sorry, members, I don't want to get, I don't want to get involved, I don't want us to get involved in an argument about whether there should be one, uh, an airport or there shouldn't be an airport. We just want to deal with this letter, please. Councillor Green?
To be fair to the, to the working group, the thinking was that Amory Tavellion has nothing invested in this decision to approve a DCO. She didn't make it, her predecessor did. Um, and so there was just a chance that rather than risk losing a DCO again, she might just be persuaded that it's not a good idea. That was the point of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Huxley, then councillor Green?
I agree with you, Chair. I think this letter shouldn't be sent at the present time. I think we should wait for what happens, whether there's going to be a second JR judicial review. In my opinion, I imagine that would be the case because nothing has changed from the first one. Um, and this is probably a bit controversial, but, um, in my opinion, the Chair of any committee at RTC shouldn't be a resident. I think it should be a councillor. In this case, I don't think it's appropriate that someone who's a resident.
I, I quite agree with you on that. But anyway, councillor Crittenden?
Uh, I think I'm going to say similar to what various other people have already said, and that is that I think, yes, it, it shouldn't be coming from us at this time. Um, I think it certainly has value as residents writing it. Um, and it, it might be that, uh, there may be more than one that needs to write it, but this is just the wrong type.
I'm proposing that then, that at this, that this time, we do not send this letter on behalf of Ramsgate Town and Council, but we await to see whether the judicial review is accepted. And, and in that case, then I think we can work with the, and then we can revisit it. A seconder, please?
Yes.
You want councillor Piper? Right, all those in favour, please show? Those against? Two. That's, uh. Abstain. Thank you. That's carried. Thank you. Right, um, duh, 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 duh. Item three, uh, to consider the carb, just carb.
Carb.
All right, it's been a long day, isn't it? The carb, the, the carb, uh, the carbon orbit from the Climate Change Action Group.
Thank you, Chair. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't present at this meeting. Um, but Ilana Adamson, who is a sustainability consultant, has looked at the RTC carbon orbit, orbit, and come up with, um, various comments. Um, that's all I can tell you, really. Um.
Have members read this? Councillor Green?
I've read it. Didn't want to sound it.
Chair's on it.
Dean, uh, wrote, um, original carbon orbit. I personally would like to see a report from him.
I, I absolutely agree with you. I think, you know, Dean's done a hell of a lot of work for this council in relation to it. And I would like him to look at it and to get comments from him, and then he can come back to council. I'll propose that second.
Let's just say something, Chair. Um, I think originally the town clerk who did the same thing at Sandwich Town Council has created, said we should create a parish emergency plan.
Right.
That would incorporate this.
Yeah.
So please, it talks about, is that flooding?
Okay.
That's something I think Laura doesn't know about, that she's thinking about.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a combination that we could do.
The town clerk has also, um, said that rather than this move to officers, that the Climate Change Action Group to consider how to implement the content of the reports as, as a working group, we'd need Dean's advice.
But we need Dean's advice on that, and I want him to, I definitely want him involved in this, and I want him to come back to us or he, or he comes back to me, uh, and with the town clerk, so we can get that sorted.
I'd just like to say about this, the climate group, is that I disagree. I, I think it's a very positive step and a bold step we've taken to have the Chair as a, as a citizen. And exactly the same as councillor Green has said. Some of this is way beyond me and I don't quite understand it, but because I'm in a committee where there are experts, I am rapidly learning about things. And I also think Dean's done a fabulous job. From, 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 from a zero start, he's created something which has been able to start mapping what we're doing as a council, so what we have directed that's on. And I think having these experts in the room, uh, for Dean also offers him a chance to grow in terms of his, his, uh, knowledge of, of the environment, you know, climate change issues. So I, I welcome the fact that we've taken a brave step to have, to make a, a, a citizen the Chair. I think it's very empowering for us and for them. And I welcome the fact that I'm sat in a, on a committee, learning stuff from experts, uh, from areas that I know very little about.
I don't agree. Um, we're a council. Council should chair all of its meetings. The councillors should chair all of its meetings. Experts, as you say, which you're learning from, give us the input of that, and then you still learn from that. Having the, the Chair doing it doesn't make a blind bit of difference. Uh, except it's a council, it's a council, uh, committee and it should be chaired by the councillor. End of.
Chair, TDC, at the Climate Action, sorry, Climate, uh, CAG, um, aided by Hannah Scott, who's the officer, she has other officers that input into the meetings and write reports. The councillors on the committee are councillors, so we take the final decision. So we take all the information that they give us as the officers. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a resident who is leading it. We are the council, we are, you know, it is funded by the residents. You know, we are in control of the, what's kind of come out of this.
Can I just say?
Say, councillor Green?
But I certainly don't intend anything to take her off of it, but I'll just say, I think in future we need to be careful about that. Councillor Green?
In future, fine, but I, I was just going to remind council that it was a council decision to allow this committee.
Absolutely.
Yes, I do, but I think it was a wrong decision. Uh, and that's just my, that's my view, but anyway, let's, um, go forward.
Councillor Piper seconded your proposal.
Right, which ones? I forgot what I said now.
Um, to, to pass this report to Dean.
Yeah.
And ask him to come up with a report in combination with, um.
In conjunction with this report and, and then it needs to.
Town clerk, with the town clerk.
With the town clerk, and then we can come back with it, yeah. Favour of that, please show? Thank you. Anyone against? No. Abstain? No, thank you. Chair? Yes, sorry, uh, I've got to go and pick my daughter up from the station, so. Thank you, thank you for the change, councillor Rezeki. Councillor?
Bye, George.
Yeah, uh, she's got, she's got to go and clean Rishi's car. Right, uh, item eight, co- community assets. Um, item one of that is to receive a written report from the town clerk regarding Albion Gardens and consider the recommendations contained therein. Um, from, hopefully you've read it. But if not, e- effectively, uh, as, as you know, we, even before we were elected in two thousand and nineteen, this council had asked to take over Albion Gardens, um, and, and for it to be a community asset transfer. Um, that was, um, never processed. Uh, we've been back to the council on several occasions. I've certainly spent a lot of time trying to res- resolve this. Um, effectively, what's now happened is, uh, that when we were getting somewhere, the council did, decided to go for a grant on the Pulamite. And that now restricts us, uh, that restricts us six years, uh, for it to be transferred. That is what the officers told us. We've subsequently been told by the Director of Regeneration uh, at TDC that it does not, within that, uh, mean that, uh, that another council cannot take it over. However, I think what we need to be clear of is that the, the whole, the council want us, if should we take it over, for it to be not only the gardens, but the waterfall and the Pulamite. Um, so really, this is just a, it, it's really just an update for, for you. Um, and, uh, the, the resolution is that members are asked to consider if an asset. if an asset transfer of the Gardener War Memorial, because that's the important part of it as well, should still progress and to challenge the estates team on their interpretation of Historic England's grant rules or conclude the inquiry for now to be picked up in the future, council if they so wish. That's the, that's the, the recommendation. I don't know who was first. Councillor Crichton?
I was a fraction of a second ahead, but that was kind of, um, two things. Uh, the first one is, we actually were leaning towards stroke of the faith that we didn't want the Pulamite.
Yes.
And they are, will only transfer the Albion Gardens with the Pulamite waterfall.
Yeah.
We don't have the technical skills to do the, um, uh, pump maintenance within our own staff, so we would need to be looking at external, um, contractors to do that. It is a massively major piece of work to, just to correct the overgrowth that is actually already in that waterfall area. It's in a huge state. But the other thing is that's not in here and, um, uh, the town clerk is aware, um, as, as is the town promoter, that actually there is also a query over the land registration of the, um, of the, uh, Albion Gardens. Because when you look at the map and you look at where the land register is, it actually comes down the road and then it just cuts a straight line across. And there's lovely two chunks of Pulamite that is actually not registered to anybody. Now, when that land was originally transferred from Ramsgate Borough Council in nineteen seventy-four, that land, that, that, those two chunks of Pulamite, either side of the steps that approach Destiny should have been registered as, um, part of the land that is now owned by TDC. Nineteen seventy-four, there was no need for the land to be registered under the legislation. It was actually not registered until two thousand and seven. And I have absolutely no idea why they drew a straight line across it. Um, and when I met with the director of property, he couldn't explain why there was a, he thought it was odd that there was a straight line across it. So I would actually want to see that resolved first because, um, we could, we could walk in and own that bit of land if we wanted to. But it's, it's not registered to anybody, although it actually belongs to TDC because it originally belonged to RBC. So I, I think there is an issue there as well, um, that would, that's not really part of this report, but it, it, we are aware of.
Thank you. Councillor Piper? Oh, councillor Green, sorry, yes, you were, you were a fraction of a second late, wasn't you? Sorry, councillor Green.
From, from a starting point of view, councillor Crittenden, Crittenden is.
It's been a long day, it's been a long day, it's always.
It's quite correct. We do not have the capability to look after, to look after the Pulamite and the waterfall. I think that we're going to consider Destiny in a minute. Uh, that's a separate question. What we do have the capability to do is to offer, along with other, um, pocket parts, as they're called, to TDC that, that will cut the grass in Albion Gardens, but I don't, I personally don't think we should, we should, um, pursue it as a transfer.
Thank you, Chair. You've probably already been there, councillor Crittenden, sorry, for a few, Chair. Um, TDC have a, a, a map on their computer system and you click on it and it comes up pink. If it's pink, it belongs to TDC. If it's not, it doesn't. However, the land registry, and I only know this because I'd just done it regarding my own home and property boundaries. Um, if there, if you come across a mistake or a, um, an inconsistency on the land registry, for the principe sum of forty-eight pounds, you can have that corrected so long as the relevant people have signed the paperwork. I've just done that to my house because they had a boundary going straight through the middle of ne- one of next door buildings. And I had to say, but I don't own that building. It goes alongside.
Well, that'd be if I could sell it, I mean, that's.
So I've just done that. It cost forty-eight pounds. I have to say, the bad news was it took almost a year and I'm simply talking about purchasing a three foot stretch of land and a garage, you know, three foot wide, twenty yards long with a garage at the end of it. It, it took a year, but it, it costs forty-eight quid and it can be done. They rectify mistakes on land registry.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a p- proposal um, that we advise Thannick District Council that we do not take on Albion Gardens or the Pulamite or the waterfall. We did, because they've made it clear that they will not let us just take the gardens on. Um, but to add in as well, for the town clerk to advise that we could come to an agreement where we would maintain the grass, cut the grass or whatever. I was quite happy with that. But I, I, I think we just have to take it that it's been going on for years and we ain't going to get anywhere with it. So I think we should tell them to stick it myself. Councillor Crichton?
Can I just very quickly, um, uh, comment on councillor Green's point about the, um, care of the gardens? Because under the new, uh, strategy group that is due to meet, um, fairly soon, that is cer- certainly an area that I would want to include for consideration. So that is in hand, um, I, I would suggest and, and also reviving the, um, volunteer group that actually do a lot of the work in the gardens.
Indeed.
Has, uh, kind of disintegrated a bit, but, but those two areas are actually going to be in hand, so hopefully that will, will be handled.
Thank you. Councillor Piper?
Uh, thank you, Chair. At, at the bottom of, where it's the item eight one, um, there's the note, uh, there is another project underway looking at the green spaces in RTC.
Yeah.
We still have an involvement in the site, so we take consolation in that.
Yes.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Thank you. Councillor Nixey?
Uh, it might be advisable for the town clerk, who have the rights to TDC, to explain that we are not interested.
Yeah.
To point out that the volunteers who've been outstanding up to this point are.
I have, yeah.
And not only are we not interested, but the volunteers may be either and therefore we're handing it back as a, to deal with it type thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Let's see what they come back with anyway. So, proposal, seconda?
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody, do. Um, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Any objections? Abstentions? Oh, that's carried. Oh, sorry, councillor Winks abstaining. Um, so that's that one. Right, uh, item two is to receive a written report from councillor Crichton regarding War Memorial at Albion Gardens and the East Cliff Lions and consider the motions contained therein and, sorry, I've, I've, I've lost my bit of play, but this has got. The resolution is to request for consideration and approval Ramsgate Town Council to approach TDC for a transfer of the monument known as Destiny into RTC ownership and request for consideration and approval that the town council to approach TDC for confirmation of ownership or otherwise the two Grade Two listed structures known as the Two Lions on Ramsgate East Cliff with a view to a transfer of ownership. Uh, should that be possible? If not, the further investigation ownership with a view protection of these two. I think I did have a chat with the town clerk, uh, yesterday and what we both thought was a way forward, sorry councillor Crichton, I don't know, let you, oh, that used to come in a second.
This is interesting, thank you.
Yeah, okay. For officers to seek quotations for any of the work for refurbishment of Destiny and the Two Lions before proceeding with any approach to TDC as detailed in the resolution. Uh, because I think what we, what we sat and discussed was, uh, one, I don't know what the actual uh, structure of Destiny is, what material it is and whether, oh, if you do, you can advise us in a second, but obviously what, what materials it was when it was a previous, when it was first done and then, uh, to see whether we get that, but I, I certainly think that that's a good idea that we get, we get quotes for it first before we go any further. Councillor Crichton?
Yeah, um, we actually know that Destiny is carved from something called Portland Stone. Portland Stone is an extremely soft stone, vulnerable to the elements. I actually went to full council at RTC with a question at the last meeting regarding the monuments and memorials throughout the whole of Thannick District Council's area. Because in contravention of the, uh, cabinet agreement in two thousand and five, no work in, um, prevention of deterioration to any of the memorials and monuments in TDC ownership has been carried out since two thousand and fifteen. What that has meant for the, uh, Destiny Monument in particular is that she has, uh, continued to deteriorate and is in, now in a very poor condition as a result of neglect. But also part of the answer that I got at cabinet, at, not the cabinet, at full council was that the reason for that is there are no resources and the only action that they are going to take with regard to monuments and memorials is not to do any restoration, not to do any repair, not to do any preventative work, but to basically get rid of them. So that was the answer I got in full council. That's what I took the question for, so I got that answer publicly. And I think I might even have quoted it in there, um, there. So it's right for us to take over because they actually, uh, want to get rid of it as much as they can anyway, because TDC haven't got the money to do it. We know that it cost six thousand pound for a full restoration in two thousand and four. Um, and that was grant funded partly by, um, various local groups as well as, um, what was then Historic England. As a statutory authority, we are not able to get grant funding from another statutory body. Um, so, um, in, in Heritage England or whatever it's called now, would not be able to, um, offer any grant funding towards the cost of any restoration. And obviously that restoration is going to cost much more than it did in.
It would have to be done in Portland Stone.
Yeah, I, I mean, actually, what I'm going to do at this moment is I'm actually going to ask you if, councillor Ovenden could comment because he naturally knows a bit more about Portland Stone than I do. No, he's looking at me a bit panicky. So, but, but we've, we've been and we've had a look at it and, um, yeah, I, I mean, there is, there is work there. My concern is that this is a monument where our mayor goes every year um, and conducts one of the, the mayoral services as well as various other things that, that happen every year around there. At, at a, at a monument that is being completely neglected and deteriorating year on year.
Do you wish to make a proposal?
Yeah, that we actually do what, what's written at the end of there.
And would you, would you accept, uh, a third part of that? Is that we, is that, uh, officers seek quotations? Because obviously before we take it, if the council decides that it will take it on, we need to know how much it's going to cost, whether it can be repaired?
There are, I mean, we, we would, if we had ownership of it, we would have to look at the, the various options and that may be, um, repair, it may be replica, it could be anything. We would have to look at, at what all the options are to prevent further deterioration or restoration. But un- until or unless we actually have it in our.
I, I'd certainly think we should get a quotation first.
Fair enough.
It just makes common sense.
Okay, I, I'm.
Makes common sense. Yeah, so we know what we're looking at money.
We have looked at trying to get quotations already, but that didn't come to anything.
No, but hopefully it will go through.
Not here, then, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, we're not exactly, also you've got to remember, it's not just about statue. There's also a surround.
Surround.
The tablets.
Yeah.
Sown, which is from the, uh, lower sedimentary bed. And it's actu- actually fossil bearing. If you actually look at it, it's actually fossils coming through. Interesting thing about it, it's like every war memorial with Ramsgate to the First World War, there's no names on them. It's just in memory of the dead. It's a layout.
There were so many of them. It's a piece of memorial.
Yeah.
Councillor Makey, sir?
Oh, I've, I've had my hand.
Oh, sorry, Becky.
You've got to learn to look left. Uh, I was before tiny, but never mind. Uh, I'm here. Just learn to look left.
Well, I, I, I do rely, I do rely on a deputy clerk.
I, I totally agree with taking control of that, but I, interesting to note that as a statutory body, we can't apply for grants, so maybe there's a, that maybe there's a way of.
And that not to other statutory bodies.
I, I mean, what I'm saying is maybe there's, maybe there's an, an option if we take control of it to actually involve the Ramsgate Society and in, in, in looking for, so, so creating a, a Destiny action group, if you like, that, that becomes a sort of a committee of its own that, that can, that can look for, for money, pots of money that that are outside us, that, that, any, any, any money we could, uh, flash for, but I totally support it, to control of it. And Portland Stone, a lot of the Jacob Flagger's made of Portland Stone, Punch and Portland Bill. So it's a very important building material.
Does he know?
I did hear of it, John.
Yeah, I'm sorry, councillor Makey.
I think we have not very far away, a very mon- monumental building with lots of stonemasons, I imagine, working on Country Cathedral all the time. Perhaps we could even get someone to come from there?
I'll ask the auspices.
Next time you're printing.
No, but they have all the expertise.
That's true.
That's true.
It's a great idea.
Chicken and egg. Us TDC in principle first.
Well, yeah, we could do, we could do both, can't we? I just wanted to include that, that we can.
Customs will cost money, so, uh, favour, ask TDC in principle first.
Do that.
Remember the name of the chair of the people who are doing Radford House? Who's the person who's doing Radford?
Consultant, so are you talking?
The consultant, Michael Foley, and.
Correct. His company, I did, um, contact him quite a long time ago about the lands.
Yeah.
Oh, the three lands, the two lands. That was a joke.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Very good. And, um, he said he was quite interested. He wanted to sort of know who, because it's TDC and I couldn't get any further through the maze of TDC bureaucracy. So he might be interested in, in giving a quote. Yeah, because he got, he's got two people who, as you probably know, who against, so can I just say, he's got two people who he knows who are working on Country Cathedral.
Oh, okay.
But the, the stonemasons.
We can ask the town clerk to contact Michael.
That, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I think that's a goo- good idea. Councillor Nixey?
Quote or no quote, we need to speak to TDC because they could just turn around and say no, so if there was a proposal on the table, can I just second it, please?
Yeah.
Yes, indeed, indeed. All right, so we've got the pro- proposals, the three. You happy with the three?
Uh, yeah, the, can we just check the, the, um, the, both of the two on here?
Yes.
And that we get the quotes is the third.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Indeed, indeed. Rose in flag, seconda?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll add that in, yeah. Seconda for that. We have seconda, councillor Ara. All in favour? Thank you. Against? Abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. Um, right, um, item three of this to receive and note the notes of the meeting about the East Cliff lift. The quotes, actions and information requested from TDC listed in, in the report. I don't know what I've done with my, my thing there. Members, as you know, I mean, this matter's been going on for some time. I was approached by the leader of the council telling her, telling me that she's got fifty grand, mate, and holding a pocket in her trousers for, uh, money she's got from Southern Water Room, would be delighted to give it to Ramsgate Town Council towards the lift should the council decide to, to take it on. Back to her and said, as, as, uh, taking on board what councillor Green proposed, that we take on the, uh, we, we give her the concession as well. Uh, she advised me that she would, um, give the lift and the concession. But we've had nothing in writing. We've had no con- no confirmation. Both, uh, the town clerk and myself have written separately to the chief executive, de- interim chief executive and the leader and the deputy leader of the council requesting. The leader and the deputy leader of the council requesting meetings with them. So that we can discuss various issues, which includes the lift, the bandstand. And other issues, the, the market, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Um. Uh, I've had no response to my emails. Chief executive did respond to the town clerk's. Saying that she would get, he would get officers to look at it. That was about three or four weeks ago. We've had nothing since. Um, so effectively. Um, what we've. What we was. The town clerk and I are suggesting to you is that, um. The suggested actions on, on the back there, if you've seen those. And whether you would be in favour, uh, in, in favour of those actions and which is to enable us to get. Proper up to date quotes of both the engineer. And, uh, and the, uh, not the architect, the, um. Jeff, Jeff Oliver to see the, the actual state of the building and for the TDC to confirm exactly. What part, how far that lift goes into the cliff. Because that is something that we need to know as well. So if, if members are in favour of that, uh, we will proceed.
But.
Could I just do a straw poll? Nothing formal, just a straw poll to see if members. Would prefer Ramsgate Town Council to actually take that lift and concession on.
Yes.
We would, I know we've got other things to.
Yeah.
To do.
Definitely.
So on the whole, we will be in favour of doing that, depending on the money that we get.
Yes.
If it came with the money and the concession.
A concession.
Yeah, okay, okay. So we, we will forward that on. As if all members are in favour of that.
Yeah.
We will continue. Thank you for that. Uh, I'll propose, councillor Nixey second.
And that is all of this.
That's all of that, yeah.
And plus the.
Yeah, plus the other bits, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, hang on, that's no, there it is, move it, thank you. No, I don't want that. Move the other bit. Um.
Yeah, you do want that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Item nine. Is, uh, tree planting Jubilee Forest. Um, the report is. Pretty, pretty much, yeah, if you want to go to.
Um, um. Previously discussed possibility of increasing tree coverage and for us to plant trees. Um, we can plant trees on TDC owned land, uh, at Jackie Baker's. However, we would be fully, uh, responsible for maintenance. TDC will not water or care for those, those trees at all. Um. It's absolutely no. So the town clerk is asking to consider if, if you'd like to pro- progress the, the proposal. If necess- if the necessary planting and aftercare can be taken in, in house. At the moment, we do have technicians. Who are doing a lot of outside work. Um, supervisor technician has been asked to consider whether the technicians could manage the watering of new trees as required. And town clerk's waiting for his response on that. We're not so sure that they do have the capacity to make, to look after a good number of trees.
Councillor Piper's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, there is. Currently no budget for this project and miscellaneous budget is now exhausted. Funds could be wired from the previous, as previously suggested from capital projects and asset acquisitions. Or the operating funds to be kept in reserve, which are two, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, council to decide whether you want to carry on with this idea or.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you Chair, if I could just flesh this out a little bit. This began. When we were looking at the possibility of buying a piece of land. My understanding was that there was. Certainly for one piece of land, there was a budget of about fifty thousand quid available. Um, I'm surprised that the figures weren't on, on this report. I did send the town clerk the. Full email stream for this because. Simultaneously to looking at the purchase of that piece of land. I was in talks with TDC about this. The original quote they gave me was for thirty thousand pounds. For a mixture of oak and non oak. For the stakes, the posthumous and everything. And the maintenance of those trees.
Okay.
And the quote they gave, and the email, I have sent the email to the town clerk. The quote they gave was thirty thousand pounds. And that included maintaining the trees.
Ah, okay.
But with regard to there being no budget, that's where it started.
Yeah.
Coming from the idea of purchasing land to plant some trees. There is a canopy of trees that goes part of the way around. The idea was to continue it, to call it Jubilee Walk or something like.
Yeah.
I, I suspect what happened is that people might then want to put memorial benches. In the walk and, and, you know, people could walk and sit and so on. But that's just to flesh that out a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I can certainly chase up why the thirty thousand pound figure isn't there.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's what.
Do you know the company? Do you know the company?
TDC provided the.
Oh, TDC provided, yeah.
Charged us thirty thousand quid to do the trees and that would include maintaining the trees. I'll, I'll read forward the email to the town clerk.
Okay, thank you. Now shall we?
Can I just ask, I think the best tree planting that's happened in Thannick. Is what's happened up on the East Cliff.
Georgia Six Park.
The Georgia Six Park. I mean, it's absolutely superb because there's a measure of the. Trees that have been, the stakes are substantial, so I don't think they've lost a tree. And I, I think the aftercare has been superb. Uh, is, is it, councillor Piper, do you know? Councillor Piper, do you know if the quote from TDC. Involves the sort of planting that went up there, which I think is exceptionally good because it, it's, it's sort of enhances the woodland that's already there. It's going to add to it rather than stick out. I think what's happened on, on my cliff is, uh, strange.
Chair, no, I think there's a general acceptance that some of the whips that have been put in Jackie Baker's weren't substantial.
Yeah.
Now, the, the quote, as councillor Green just worked out. Those figures thus far come to about seven thousand pounds. That was for, uh, an initial tranche of trees. The second email talked about making the trees more substantial rather than whips. And to include maintenance. And as I say, the quote was thirty thousand pounds. I thought I would be safe talking to them in those kinds of figures. Because we were considering spending fifty thousand. Buying a piece of land and then we would have to spend the money to change it. So. I, I think when I saw this, I thought I need to chase up where the rest of that is.
Thank you. I, I, I think we need to get some further information on.
Information before we can.
And, and then, so I, I'm going to. Propose that we, uh, put this on the back burner for a bit and. Town clerk to get some, get some information. If you'd be kind enough to resend that. To the town clerk and to myself, councillor Piper, I would be, be grateful.
Yes, seconda for that.
Seconda for that? All, all in favour of that? Thank you, members.
Uh, next meeting.
Next meeting is on the, the, what's the name?
Thirty. Thirty of November.
Thirty of November. Thank you, members. That's the end, end of the meeting.
Thank you Chair.